Again, thank you very much for your patience as we made sure that everything was in order. We're very glad that you're here. We're about to share with you the results of more than two years of work, including community engagement with more than 1,000 Durham Public Schools, families, educators, and community stakeholders. As we look to begin the, a new phase of the Growing Together Project and provide increased opportunities for our elementary students as the foundation for future work. This work will be complete at the elementary level in the 2024-2025 school year. This is our proposal for the future of elementary programming and school boundaries in Durham Public Schools. We want to bring this to you and hope that, the, hope that this information will be reassuring. And we will take your feedback and your comments in the, in the Q and A section at the bottom of your screen. I'd like to go to the next screen and talk a little bit about the agenda for the evening, how the, how this is going to flow. We're going to provide a little bit of history, a little bit of our vision for the Growing Together Project for this initiative. We're going to recap what we announced previously about geographic regions for our schools. We'll talk about the future of academic programs and placements. We will then talk a little bit about student assignment rules and school boundaries for the future, and then describe next steps for the project. What is our vision? What are our dreams for Growing Together? We'd like to show you this very short video to give you a taste of it. We're aware of the audio issue and we're trying to get that corrected.
Equitable opportunities, limitless potential, and dreams. What does that mean for Durham Public Schools students and parents?
My child has special needs and currently they have to attend three PPS schools to get the therapies they need. As a student, my child deserves the same access.
Access and equity should be a given. Our options should not be limited because of where we live.
My child's school is bursting at the seams and Durham keeps growing. How we plan to accommodate that growth is important to me.
My friends speak Spanish and I want to learn too.
They are building a school just down the street from my house. I am excited for it to open so I can go.
I get to go to school with my friends.
My dad says I could be the first doctor in our family. My new school has a class that will help me get ready. I can't wait.
This is our vision for Growing Together. Every elementary school providing a strong foundation for students. Every child receiving an enriching experience. All of us igniting the limitless potential of our students. With our community, we can make this vision Durham's reality.
That is our vision, but I'd like to turn things over to our Director of Student Assignment, Melody Marshall, for some information about some of the challenges that we are facing as Durham Public Schools today in offering the programs that our children deserve equitably and with greater and with adequate access for all of our families who seek those programs. It's Marshall.
You saw how excited I am. That video was wonderful. Sorry, Chip, I just talked right over you. And good evening, everyone. Again, my name is Melody Marshall and I say it all the time, but I am absolutely honored to service the Director of Student Assignment. This work is dear to my heart. I'm born and bred in Durham. I'm a proud graduate of Durham City slash Durham Public Schools. That merger, I was right there. I'm a graduate of B Hillside High School. My mom was a retired Durham Public Schools music teacher. So Durham Public Schools is literally my home and it is nothing less than a privilege to be here at this virtual table with you. And thank you so much for being here tonight. So if you were able to join us for some of our earlier community conversations in the fall, you may remember me sharing this slide with you. And it really just brings together the why. Why we've embarked on this bold work that has not been systematically done for nearly 30 years. And the simple answer to the why is because of our families and students. It's literally because of you. So we recognize that our current school assignment policies and practices have led to complex issues that families were navigating. We recognize that there was program misalignment as students transitioned from one school to the next, as well as trying to navigate the building of our new schools, which is so exciting, but also trying to allocate, allocate the resources so that we're addressing overcrowded schools that currently exist in so many of our schools. Our families are also dealing with the impacts of the explosive residential growth in Durham County, as well as navigating the disparities of poverty and diversity in so many of our schools that exist because of outdated school boundaries. And they're also trying to manage this while dealing with the complex rules of our lottery system. We can go to the next slide. So this is something new we wanted to share with you. We've gone in and taken a closer look at the impacts of the current student assignment policy on priority rules. And when we're talking priority rules, we're talking about those walk zones and those choice zones and priority zones. And what we found was that the majority of our magnet schools and those seats that are available are accessed by those geographic priority zones and that only 28% of the lottery seats are left for the general applicant pool and the public. So these are the challenges that we sought to address as we began this journey two years ago in this Growing Together initiative with you. And so as with that, I asked Dr. Debbie Pittman, Assistant Superintendent of Specialized Services, to come and share what we heard from you during our community engagements, time with you and the next steps that we hope in working together shaping our, our future. Dr. Pittman.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall, and good afternoon or good evening, everyone. Again, I am Debbie Pittman, Assistant Superintendent of Specialized Services. And on the next slide, I want to share some of the rich information that we've summarized that we have heard across our community during these many, many months of community engagement. What was very interesting is unanimously across our community, there was a significant emphasis that all Durham Public Schools are great schools and that the district, together with our community, our families, our educators, should be growing great schools together. So when we began talking about the programs of interest that our families were particularly mentioning, we heard a lot about foreign languages, the rich cultural diversity of Durham, its growing explosion of new families coming and the desire for our students to experience languages. And currently, we offer foreign language specifically through our International Baccalaureate Program. We also heard a great level of interest in our year-round school calendars and in our Montessori schools. Earlier on the testimonial reporting video, you heard a family say that their exceptional child has to experience many transitions. And what we're trying to do with our Exceptional Children's Program, particularly at pre-K and then growing into kindergarten through fifth, is ensuring those children have, don't have to change schools in order to continue in their service delivery. We're trying to align all of those within their elementary facility. And then we also heard wonderings from our community about why particularly having at elementary level specialized programs in the arts or specialized programs in STEM or the science, technology, engineering, and math, when indeed all of that should be afforded to children through a rigorous and relevant core curriculum. And so from that, we began to think, what should all schools? Let's start foundationally. What should every elementary and all of our elementary school programs offer? And then from this information, where do we start to offer or expand additional programs based on this input? And where should we be offering complete district-wide access for all families? So on the next slide, if we could, this slide is going to talk about where we are going with growing great schools together across every elementary school. And you can see that we want to ensure that every elementary school will ensure at least weekly that children will experience the visual arts, music. And one of our new recommendations is that every elementary school in Durham, beginning in kindergarten, will offer world language or a foreign language for our children. And then stemming from that or growing into the STEM discussion is ensuring that we have science, technology, engineering, and math in the classrooms daily infused in the curriculum. So that's our proposal for every elementary in Durham to have the, this level of programming and support. And now what I'd like to do is transition to where we're going with our programming in, in a regional model. But first, Mr. Palmer will review our regions for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pittman, and good evening, Durham families. It's a pleasure to be here. If you would, please go to the next slide. In December of 2021, the Board of Education adopted Policy 4150 updates that allowed us to look at regions, which ensures that we're not only being responsible for individual schools, but looking at how do schools work together to support areas of our community. Yes, those regions are intended to support the maximum number of students and provide relevant program options, but also, and importantly, we've heard to increase the proximity of those academic programs. Having to go across the county because there's one type of program has a whole nother level of equity implications and a burden on our children and the limited resources we have as a community. Regions can also help increase the probability that our students and our families can access programs. We've seen that the placement of our programs has created a velvet rope and barriers to accessing programs. Director Marshall shared with you, the majority of our current application or magnet program seats go to priorities. They don't go to the lottery. So regions give us an ability to look at those disparities. Next slide. You can see our schools by region. Now, we have a total of five regions overall. We're going to come back to those schools in just a moment. There is a slide that has a map with it. If you can go to the next slide, please. There we go. So here you can see, we've been working with our community infrastructure that would include our interstates, our freeways, our forests, our rivers, even large land uses like universities and business parks. We've identified Northern Durham as generally the region north of Interstate 85. Eastern Durham is the region of Durham that is east of the East End Connector, which will finish completion of construction here this 2022 year. Beneath that, we have Southeastern Durham, which takes from RTP in and through Fayetteville Street. You can see Southwest Durham, that area south of 147, through onto the both Orange County line as well as the Chatham County line. And importantly, Central Durham, a unique region that is bracketed by all the other regions around it and the heavy infrastructure, Interstate 85, NC 147, and the East End Connector. Can these different areas of Durham, can its schools work together to support the communities that were, are within Durham and its students and the needs of those students? Or will students continue to have to go across the county to get a specialized setting, whether they're an exceptional child or pursuing an academic program? I would encourage our staff to go to the previous slide. I want to go back to those schools for a second, just so folks can orient themselves within Durham and the schools within the regions. Thank you. Spend about five seconds here. I know there's been questions about the equity of the regions and we're going to go two slides up and talk about that. One of the things we wanted to look at was not only the demographics of Durham Public Schools. Excuse me, if you can go one slide back. There's a table, thank you, that shows our demographics by region. It shows our enrollment and the capacity of our schools in each of the regions. If you take your enrollment and divide it by capacity, it means the utilization. Our families of color across Durham and our median household incomes. Here you can see each of our regions is 50% or 10% greater as it relates to families of color and $50,000 or more at the median household income level. We're trying to make sure that the schools that we have within Durham are working together to support our community, support our students, and that they don't have to go far to receive the academic instruction and programs they need to ignite the limitless potential we believe all Durham Public School students have. Next slide. Without, let me hand it back to Dr. Julie Pack, who will review the academic program, the vision for that, and placement recommendations. Dr. Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Good evening, everyone. Uh, next slide, please. So this slide is, uh, to give you a look at the overall proposal plan based on the elements that were discussed earlier from the input that was received across multiple and many input sessions over the last two years. So we look at what we, every elementary school offer, what would happen in each region, and then what would be a larger, what we would call district lottery access or across multiple regions. Uh, so first, let's look at all elementary schools. We talked earlier, Dr. Pittman earlier, talked about STEM, music and visual arts, and global languages in every, um, in every elementary school. Regionally, uh, within the, each of the five regions, specialized programs like EC Specials, EC and Pre-K, uh, those continuums would stay within a region. And then, uh, we would look at programmatically a year-round and a dual-language immersion in each region. And then finally, those programs again, that would be across multiple regions, would be the International Baccalaureate or IB program, Montessori, and the Ignite Online Academy. If we go to the next screen, you'll see the region plan and the schools where those, um, region, where those regional programs would be. Again, these are the application programs for the regional area. So Northern for year-round would be easily and dual-language immersion or DLI would be Halt. In the Eastern region, year-round, uh, school would be Oak Grove and DLI School Merrick Moore. Central region, we would have year-round Eastway and WG Pearson and DLI would be Club Boulevard. Southeast region would have a year-round at Pearson Town and also have access to the year-round at WG Pearson and the DLI Lyons Farm. And then finally, Southwest region would have a year-round program at Hope Valley and they would also have access to the WG Pearson Year-Round School and DLI would be at Southwest. The next slide will look at those district-wide application programs of Montessori and IB. So there would be Montessori programs, uh, Pre-K 5 at Little River, Morehead, and Watts. And then an IB or International Baccalaureate program at EK Poe and Burton. Next slide, please. At this time, I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Melody Marshall, the Director of Student Assignment, to talk about the rules for student assignment.
Thank you, Dr. Pack. We can go right to the next slide. So we know, if we could go back one slide, I'm sorry. So we know that we have not had this conversation. We cannot have this conversation without lifting up equity. This is the whole purpose. This is an equity-driven effort, um, equity of access, equity of socioeconomic representation in our, in our schools, equity of resources. So that is the, the driving force of this work. And we've realized that many of our current rules of assignment contribute to the inequities that we're hoping right now to help to dismantle. So we go to the next slide. Thank you. So as many of you know, and Dr. Pittman mentioned, the, um, the revisions of Policy 4150, our school assignment policy, has given us, what I've been talking and saying is, it's given us the ingredients to go into the kitchen and help to develop those rules of access that we want to help dismantle the inequities that we know exist. And what we're doing, um, a Policy 50, 4150 gave us some baseline things that we know our families, we heard our families, we heard our community, we heard our board. They asked us to maintain those sibling priority links, those program links. We are enhancing program links. So we really want to be thoughtful about our families and our, and our programs and how we access our programs. And the policy gave us that. Um, we are also being very thoughtful about the rules of access for our legacy students and returning our legacy students, our students who are currently attending application programs. And we are being really thoughtful about how those children will transition, how will, how they will be assigned. And we, um, also are being thoughtful about other potential rules such as waiting. We'll be using waiting to help balance the social, social, socio, so wow, the socioeconomic statuses in our schools. Um, so the waiting, we're really excited about that opportunity and how we'll be using that, um, option, geographic links, how transportation will be involved with our rules of access, as well as, um, you heard Dr. Pack talk about our year-round options. But we also want to be thoughtful about how, um, for families who may not want that option. So some opt-out options for those schools. And in all of this, we are really excited to share that we will be establishing an implementation process that, and we'll be working with our community, with community ambassadors, with community partners to help establish his implement, the implementation of Policy 4150 and helping to develop and get our rules of assignment. And so we look forward to our next steps and sharing with you and hearing from you and, um, continue to share with the, our, your, with us, your thoughts at engage.dps and speed.net. And we'll be talking more about that with you. Um, so I am now going to pass it back to Matthew Palmer to discuss our school boundaries.
Wonderful. Thank you, Director Marshall, and good evening again. Next slide, please. Currently, Durham Public Schools has 31 elementary schools slated to support Durham students in the 2223 academic year. Of those 31 schools, we have 22 base elementary school boundaries and 10 choice zones that sit right on top of those boundaries. One school has both a boundary and a choice zone on top of it. What that's led to is significant disparities at a school level of our free and reduced, reduced lunch eligibility rate at a school level from 26% at several schools, up to 100% at other schools. Sometimes those schools are right next to each other. In other instances, we have schools that support students of color ranging from 49% all the way up to 100%. We heard resoundingly from our parents and our students and our community leaders across numerous engagement events that these outcomes are not consistent with Durham's current values. So given the academic program, we've been looking at what could be. Next slide. Thank you. Uh, that's about 10 slides too many. If you could go backwards, please. Yep, backwards, please. If you'll all bear with us one moment, I think we're working through some technical challenges. On the next slide, we're able to show that. Thank you. Thank you. To draw a school boundary, we need three things. We need a full and complete academic program. You've heard from Dr. Pittman, Dr. Pack, Director Marshall with regards to the needs that our community has expressed for aligned pre-K and EC classrooms. I cannot express enough the desperate need we have to make sure the separate setting campuses and classrooms are aligned to support children throughout their continuing pre-K through fifth grade. You've heard from our academic team about the application programs. What has our community asked for? And the vision for that, placements for that? We've also brought forth our facilities, the capacity of our schools. How big are they? What were they designed to support? Are they suitable for the 21st learning, 21st century learning environment and the academic program that's envisioned for the campus? Where are those schools in relationship to one another? Our community and our students? And with regards to our students, do we have equitable access to the programs we've outlined previously? Is there an equitable allocation of the resources at schools? We've heard that there's not. And at a larger level, what does diversity and inclusion look like for Durham Public Schools? I think we've shared some of the data there, the wide disparities of schools that are right next to each other. So the next slide. And share with you our vision for school boundaries here in Durham Public Schools for the 2425 academic year. We've used our regions as a starting point. We've built off that to bring in the academic programs, our application programs. Looked at the location and diversity of our student population and the size of our schools. On the next slide, we're going to go region by region and break this down. This is going to be a slow walk, but a very thoughtful one. On the left, you see our current school boundaries. This is for the Northern region of Durham, north of Interstate 85. You can see more clearly now our existing boundaries, how big they are in some instances. Glenn Elementary School, for example, is a 20-mile school boundary with 2,000 students in it currently, stretching from Main Street to Falls Lake. You can see other boundaries in Northern Durham where priority zones overlay on top of each other, on top of a base elementary boundary. On the right, every elementary school that we have in the Northern region has a base area, a school boundary associated with it. At our application schools, we have reserved a number of lottery seats at those schools so that we can ensure when we run the lottery, we balance out the demographics of the school in relationship to the base area and the lottery seats. On the next slide, we'll look at the next region. This is Eastern Durham. Here you can see the current boundaries on the left. These are, excuse me, historic old boundaries that you see. And Glenn in particular spans three regions. These boundaries were not built to reflect the future of Durham. And the nearly 20,000 residential homes we have coming online. On the right, you can see the boundaries that we've proposed for the Eastern region of Durham, Glenn, Merrick Moore, Oak Grove, and Spring Valley and Bethesda, positioning ourselves for the growth and residential development in Eastern Durham, but also bringing school choice to Eastern Durham. We've envisioned and proposed that Merrick Moore services a dual-language We've envisioned and proposed that Merrick Moore services a dual-language immersion program and that Oak Grove is a year-round campus with a base area that we will use a lottery to ensure is an equitable and inclusive campus. On the next slide, we'll look at the central region. Here you can see on the left, priority zones are overlaying on top of each other, on top of base boundaries. The confusion and complexity is evident in the image. On the right, you can see a proposal such that each of our central Durham elementary schools has a base area, a boundary. Our application programs then offer lottery seats in conjunction with the base areas so that all of our schools are balanced in utilization. We're able to reduce the number of severely over-enrolled schools with this plan. We have two more regions to review and then we'll be able to answer additional questions. Next slide. In southeastern, you can see currently all of our school boundaries associated with southeastern Durham. In particular, in this illustration, our current iteration, again, two thousand students live in Bethesda's base boundary today. Our proposal works with the regional framework for southeastern Durham and respects some of our legacy programs as well as bringing additional choice options and diversity. Here you'll see we've located and proposed a dual-language immersion program at Lyons Farm Elementary School, which will bring much-needed diversity to southern Durham. And at the same time, year-round options at Pearson Town, but with a base area. Respect what we've heard about the importance of the relationship between neighborhoods and schools and using the lottery to ensure that the overall profile of the school, the students that attend, reflect our values here in Durham. One more reason to go and then we'll hand it back to our academic services colleagues. Thank you. In southwestern Durham, we've been looking at, to the left, which you can see, this is historically one of our highest growth areas in Durham as it relates to residential development. What we've envisioned is sharing a year-round opportunity at the Hope Valley Campus, maintaining the Montessori program at Morehead, but expanding its base boundary to be more inclusive and diverse and locating the dual-language immersion program as it's currently constituted at Southwest Elementary School. So in each of these regions, you can see both the current and the proposed. Next slide, please. So that's a lot of change. We have to ask the question, to what end? What does that get us? Quite a bit. Next slide, please. You've heard from Director Marshall that currently, out of our total magnet program, only twenty-eight percent of those seats are actually accessible by the lottery. With the proposed plan that we have here for the academic program and the school boundaries, you can see now those ratios shift towards a more equitable and accessible academic program in Durham Public Schools that is open to all students and regions and communities and families. You see that priority seat share is now forty-nine percent, whereas before it was seventy-two percent. You see that the lottery seats are balanced at fifty-one percent, whereas previously it was only twenty-eight percent. And in many instances, there was no opportunity at all. Next slide, please. With regards to regions, this is one of the take-home points that we must emphasize. Under our current system of student assignment and school boundaries, you can see the allocation of our magnet program seats. Not only that priority zone and lottery ratio, but where are the magnet seats? You can see currently most of them are in northern Durham, central Durham, and southeastern. Under the proposal with the regional framework, you can see that's now allocated and distributed across Durham, having standards and consistency, ensuring every region has access to its own year-round program as well as a dual-language immersion program. And yes, some district-wide application programs that we understand are highly valued within our community. But importantly, across all of our programs, we have dedicated seats to students and families and communities throughout Durham, not just one neighborhood, not just one region. Next slide, please. At a very high level, and this is the part that we have to come back to, we have thirteen severely over or under-enrolled schools in Durham today. What does that mean? That means car queue lines that stretch sometimes half a mile because there's too many students for the campus to support, or schools having to have five lunch periods because they can't feed all the students at one time. We can reduce that down to three. And of those three, we have a plan for those. They're all in our capital improvement program as campuses that need to be renovated, modernized, and expanded. It increases our access to the lottery seats more than double and aligns all of our pre-kindergarten and E C classrooms, particularly for children with exceptionalities, so that at every campus, there's a parry. So the children don't have to go from one campus to another to find a seat. And yes, we've heard quite a bit about all the improvements that need to be made with transportation. This ensures that schools are located in the regions and the boundaries of the children that they serve. That'll shorten those ride times, not only for the vehicle miles that we have to travel, but the amount of time that our children have to spend on the school bus and more importantly, in the classroom with their families. Next slide, please. You can see our proposal for the boundaries. We have a link there. It's also available on our website, the engage.dpsnc.net. We encourage you to go here. This is all interactive. We'll get more to that. And with that, I'd ask to go to the next slide. Hand back over to Dr. Deborah Pittman. Dr. Pittman.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. So what we'd like to do is share where we are headed in our next steps. And on the next slide, there's a four-year rollout, or the next four years will show us where we're headed. And I hope some of this information will address some of the questions that were in the chat. So of course, as we launch into the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the new boundaries will go into effect for Lyons Farm, which will also impact Parkwood and Creekside. The Growing Together Initiative for the secondary schools for our middle and high schools will launch. Part of the work there is to ensure that there are pathways that support career interests and the interest that the rich foundation from elementary will provide so that middle school students can start to access perhaps some specialized magnet programs and continuing in ties. So all of that work will launch next year. The alignment of the special education pre-K programs and E C programs in selected sites across in each region will continue. And again, the questions around what happens if I'm currently in a magnet school or those would be our legacy children, our legacy families, what should I expect in the coming years? Those are the rules that we want to be very deliberate and intentional and thoughtful about. Under Ms. Marshall's leadership, we will be shaping those rules in collaboration with impact from our community and our families. And then the following year, in the spring of twenty-four, we want to be positioned to be able to shape our magnet or our new application school rules. Those will be in effect so that we launch much of the new work in our twenty-four, twenty-five school year. But going back to the twenty-three, twenty-four column, you see we'll continue our regional alignment of programs for our E C pre-K and E C special populations and our launch campaign around growing great schools together. And so as you look in column, the blue column with twenty-four, twenty-five, our school boundaries that Mr. Palmer outlined will go into effect, will be positioned to open our newest elementary F, will complete the alignment of our pre-K, E C, and special programs. And then we will be positioned to launch a dual-language immersion program in each of the five regions as well as expanding our year-round calendar options in each of the five regions to reflect the high levels of interest and feedback from our community indicating that those programs were ones that they wanted to see more access, greater access. And of course, we will then be positioned to launch the Growing Great Schools Together and offering those global languages and ensuring that we have highest-quality STEM and arts programs in our schools. Then the next column, you can see we are scheduled to be completing the renovation of six additional elementary schools that will help with some of the student overcrowding. But more importantly, you can see that the International Baccalaureate and the Montessori schools are in a column. They're pending. We're hoping that those indeed will be in position perhaps to launch in twenty-four, twenty-five, but we've positioned them there in case that there's an extension of time there. But our goal is for all of our new programs to open in twenty-four. So at this time, go to the next slide. Again, the feedback and timeline is all positioned or located on our website, You can get more information about the Growing Together Initiative at that website. We anticipate presenting this information, our recommendations to the board on May nineteenth at the board meeting and moving forward at the work session on June ninth for action, particularly around the boundary work. So at this time, I will turn the webinar back over to Mr. Sutter for next for our questions session section.
Thank you so much, Dr. Pittman. So we are continuing to receive questions in the Q and A function here that we are trying to answer as we can. Obviously, we're also trying to pay attention to the presentation and be ready to assist each other. So in the time that we have left, I would like for my colleagues on the Growing Together team to take a look at the questions that have come in and recap some of the high points, some of the most frequently asked questions, literally frequently asked questions that are coming up and hit the high points. What we're going to do with the questions as we receive them, if we're not able to answer them all tonight, we are going to provide updated Q and A documents at engage.dpsnc.net to respond to your questions, to help people who were not able to watch this live to benefit from your questions and those answers. This recording will be posted to engage.dpsnc.net so that people will be able to catch up if they missed this. And we are also going to be out in the community. I will be at Holloway Street Festival on Saturday, answering questions of anybody who comes to the Durham Public Schools table about Growing Together along with Ms. Marshall. We are committed to taking this information out into the community and answering any questions that you have. This is a proposal that we are very proud of, but we know that there are many questions to be asked and we know that our board is going to be looking at this proposal and listening to your feedback very carefully. So we appreciate your attention tonight. And now I'd like to, I'd like to ask, I'll start with Matthew Palmer and then I'll go to Dr. Debbie Pittman and ask you to respond to some of the frequently asked questions that have come up or any broad themes that you feel like are really important to include. Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Sutter. I'm excited to answer one of these because it really must be addressed quickly. No rules have been made, nor determinations made, nor recommendations or proposals made for students that currently attend, those families and students that have invested, that are legacy students in a DPS, we'll call magnet programs. I know there's concern there. What does this mean for my child? This project's taken two years because we've been thoughtful and we've been listening all along the way and will continue to do so. We are opening a new elementary school F in two years and we need to begin to plan for the future. We've waited over thirty years to take the next step about balancing Durham's student assignment and school assignment policies, procedures, and boundaries. This is that next step. It may not be all in one the way that we would like. I'm sure you have questions. We know you have questions and we need your help. We need the help of our board and our public to work through implementation, to work through the rules of student assignment as we run the lottery. It cannot be done simply by a committee of district staff leaders or a small representation of the Durham community. We need to be thoughtful about this as we proceed and we will be. That's why we're not leading with those rules tonight. What we are sharing with you is what we've heard. We've heard the need for additional access and equitable access across Durham. Not just that some schools are prioritizing, there are other schools. We've heard that extensively and clearly. So we hope that that lands with you and your family as far as there's more questions to answer and we're here for. But we must be thoughtful about it at the same time. To come with a proposal that is all the way done is not what Durham has asked for. But we have asked for an initial vision of what can be. Now, in regards to concerns or questions about equity, we must also be very transparent. The existing system of student assignment reflects decades of prioritizing some neighborhoods and some students over others. There are barriers to our academic programs. And now is that moment where we as a community must ask, does this current system reflect our true values? Or does this system reflect a different type, a different place? And are we as Durham growing? We've heard the answer is yes. And we bring to the board and to our community a proposal that will reflect that. That said, we need to learn more. We need to understand more. We need to work together. Part of this project is called Growing Together and that's with intentionality. We have to grow and learn together. Many of the application programs that we've looked at, each of those boundaries has been very carefully thought out. We geo-located every student. We have a sense of the resources they have access to and the resources they're able to bring into the schools. Been very intentional and thoughtful about the location of those programs. There is no knee-jerk reaction here. This is done delicately and thoughtfully. So with that, I want to make sure we hear two things, if nothing else from my team especially, is that the location of the application programs and the boundaries that correlate with that are intentionally designed to be inclusive. Each will promote and increase the diversity at the school level and increase access to programs. The lottery component helps us ensure that overall, we're keeping an eye, we understand that historically the rules for student assignment in Durham Public Schools have influenced residential decisions. And we as an administration and as a community must be mindful of that.
I'd like to address one thing before we turn it over to Dr. Pittman for thoughts on her side of the project. There have been some questions about what about middle and high schools? We're laying the foundation with elementary schools. We need to be just as thoughtful about what we're doing for our middle and high school students as we are for our elementary students now. Middle and high schools are a little different. They're bigger. We have fewer of them and we can't exactly, we can't exactly move all of our schools all at once to different parts of the community. So middle and high schools is the next step. We're laying the foundation with our elementary schools. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Pittman for any thoughts that you want to emphasize based on the questions that have been coming in.
Indeed. Thank you, Mr. Sutter. The emphasis I would provide is we are so grateful to our community and for many of you who have been on these calls, attended our engagement sessions and provided us valuable information that we have tried to reflect carefully with intentionality and care into the proposal that we're sharing with you this evening. We heard loud and clear that our community is changing and that we value and embrace that change, that equity is that equity is extremely important and diversity and the cultural richness that Durham is experiencing is one of the most cherished values we have. The programs that we've designed are meant to reflect what we heard from our community. And we hope that we've done a good job with that. There are going to be opportunities to continue to weigh in. Please share your questions. Share whatever thoughts or concerns you may have so that we can work together and indeed grow together as we embrace these changes and make Durham Public Schools better and stronger in the coming years. We really appreciate all of your time this evening and look forward to continued partnership with you as we move forward. Thank you.
I'd like to give one last chance. And I see questions continuing to roll in and we're clearly not going to have the time to answer them all this evening, but we will take them to engage.dpsnc.net in the next, in the next weeks. I would like Ms. Marshall and Dr. Pack to also follow up with any question, with any comments for emphasis that, based on the questions that have been coming in. Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, Mr. Sutter. I was taking, answering questions in the chat as well. I saw a lot of questions. I heard Mr. Palmer address the, the question of when will we hear, how will we develop those rules? And they are, you'll hear more about that. There are also questions about, I think, Mr. Palmer, I saw multiple questions about the boundary and understanding if some of our, our application schools will all, if our application schools have boundaries and will, will people have to apply if they live in that boundary? If the application school is your base school, you will not need to apply in the lottery. That will be your neighborhood school. There are multiple questions and we are doing our best to answer them. And I know we will address all of them as, and capture them and, and get those posted for you.
And we will be seeking community input on those rules. Our intent is to use the, the assignment areas for these application schools and the rules for these application schools to ensure that our schools have better socioeconomic balance, that we are not sustaining a system of schools that is inherently inequitable. But we want community involvement in those, in that rulemaking process, both for transparency sake and for help to make sure that we don't miss anything. Dr. Pack?
Thank you, Mr. Sutter. I think that the one thing I want to lift up is, and I'll take credit for being confusing. So it's hard to, there's a lot of confusion about what, what is regional access? What is district-wide access? And so just a reminder that every school will have certain programs that will be, every student in Durham Public Schools will get to experience, and that is global languages, art, visual art and music, and also STEM, which is science, technology, engineering and math. So no matter what school, you don't have to apply and you'll have those options and experiences for your students. And then regionally, within those five regions, again, for efficiency and effectiveness to, so students aren't going all the way across the district to access a program, there'll be a lottery access or an application access to a one-year-round school within the region and one DLI school within the region. And again, those, we went over those schools. But so if you live in the eastern region, you would have the option of Oak Grove as a year-round school and you would have the option of, and that just went out of my head, somebody wanted to help me. Of a, a DLI, sorry. So those would be your schools that you would apply to. And then for the district-wide access, that means across the district. So several regions would have access to this one program. So those, those programs would be Montessori and International Baccalaureate and also the online academy. So if you, there's not a Montessori in every region, but every region has access to a Montessori. There's not IB in every region, but every region has access to an IB and there are equitable numbers of seats across the regions. So hopefully that's a little more clear.
Broadly speaking, there is more demand for year-round and for a dual-language immersion and also that, and also equity opportunities with dual-language immersion that encourage us to provide a year-round school and a dual-language immersion school in every region. And then we are adding WG Pearson as an additional year-round school to ensure that there is equity of opportunity for year-round education in all of our, in all of our regions. WG Pearson helps add more seats to be comparable for, so that in those three regions versus the other two regions, there are more seats. There is comparatively less demand, but there is still a lot of demand for Montessori and International Baccalaureate. Not enough demand for, to justify five Montessori schools, one in each region. We, we don't think so, but there is demand for more. And providing additional Montessori up in the northern region, having three Montessori elementary schools, that is a great opportunity there. And then, and then people can apply to those three Montessori schools if they're interested in a Montessori program from across the county. And then with our International Baccalaureate programs, we're really excited to expand access to International Baccalaureate to give students, elementary students, the opportunity to get in there and to progress through the International Baccalaureate Middle School Program that's currently at Shepherd Middle School and then the International Baccalaureate Advanced Program, whatever, whatever the official term is at the high school at Hillside High School. That's a rigorous, phenomenal academic program. And we want to encourage more families to get involved with that. That's why we're expanding access to IB elementary. It is 7:39 and you have been with us for an hour and some change now, and we are very, very grateful for that. We also recognize that this is not the end of the conversation. Come out to the Holloway Street Festival on, on Saturday. I will be there. Ms. Marshall will be there. We'd love to talk with you about the programs and answer more questions as we can. Go to engage.dpsnc.net for updates on this, including the interactive map that shows you all of the proposed application areas. You'll be, you, you'll be able to click and play with the map and see your street up close. It's a great opportunity to learn more about this. And as another place for you to ask questions and where we will continue to provide more information about this proposal. The last reminder that I want to say is that this is not an overnight change. A, this is a proposal. And B, this is phased over multiple years. So we are going to take the time to take care of the families that might experience a transition in terms of application programs or boundary adjustments. We will work with our community on the, on the rules and processes to make sure that those are equitable as well. We will phase this in gradually so that our community can move forward ahead, together, growing together into a more equitable, a more equitable approach to student assignment and choice programs, application programs. First in elementary schools and then later to complete the work in our secondary schools. Thank you again for being with us tonight. We're very grateful for your attention and we will continue to listen. Have a good evening.